Another change, come back another two weeks for another change. And so we kind of collected those changes in our office as they were occurring. Unfortunately, perhaps we did not come back soon enough. And so one of those changes that occurred along the way was a desire to move sanitary sewer. There's a large radius or a large corner, so to speak, on that part of the road. Road almost does a, almost a full U there. And anytime you go around a road on a big radius like that, sanitary sewers are laid in straight lines, which means you set a manhole every time you come to a corner, so to speak. And so it's difficult or more, uh, more, it's more difficult to lay around that corner because you end up having a lot more manholes as you come around and you have bigger easements the farther you stay outside the right of way. And you kind of end up dipping inside and out of the right way should come around a corner like that. And so ultimately, way back in the day, back when Greenlife was involved in the project, there had been a talk about putting some utilities in the roadway. Fairness, that was not, that discussion was not held with this developer, though. And so, um, along the process, uh, there was a decision made to put that right, put some of that sanitary sewer inside the road right away, which is not, uh, I'd say is not what we typically do in Warwick County. We also typically don't have these large corners coming around unreclaimed mine ground. And so we ended up making that change, um, and it ended up getting installed that way prior to us filing our amended set of plans, which I think brings us here today because we have something that is maybe not what we do on the majority of projects. We're here today to seek the ability to leave that sanitary sewer main in there. I understand there's a pro and con to everything in life. And the pro to this is we don't have as many manholes coming around that large section of road. The manholes typically, manhole would be a place from which you'd have infiltration in a sanitary sewer line. And so the pro is we don't have as many manholes coming around there. The con is, is that line ends up being underneath the pavement for longer because we're not spending as much effort to keep it outside from underneath the pavement. And so today we are seeking leaving that sanitary sewer line where it is installed. It was installed with sand backfill, which is required underneath, anytime you're within, under or within five feet of pavement. And it was installed that way. The developer, as they go forward, as in nor, as in most subdivisions, the curves will go down first, rock, and then the base coat of asphalt goes down. And then, as you all probably noticed in a lot of subdivisions, they'll run on that base coat of asphalt as home construction occurs. Typically, year, two years, three years, depending upon the rate of lot sales, before the final surface coat ever goes down. And it's not until the final surface coat ever goes down that you all would ever be asked to accept those roads, which means there's about three, probably, probably about three years from when that sewer main goes in the ground to when you're asked to accept those roads. And during that timeframe, um, first of all, the, the construction was compacted, so to speak, as it went in. But you also have over that three-year period, you'll have concrete trucks, lumber trucks, heavy construction equipment rolling in and out of there. And so if there is any kind of soft spot, so to speak, uh, that will definitely bear out. And that's always fixed at the developer's expense. It's never fixed at the county's expense because it occurs prior to the roads ever being accepted for maintenance. And so anything like that would be at the developer's expense. That being said, we do cross, on a regular basis, we cross roads with drain pipes, water lines, sanitary sewer lines. And so it is not uncommon to have pipes underneath the pavement in a subdivision. The only part that's a little less than normal is running them longitudinally underneath the pavement. But in this situation, um, there was an analysis done to determine which was a better fit and ultimately chose to go with underneath the pavement. And so, uh, we would seek your, uh, we're looking at concordance, that this be allowed to remain there and then for the five, for the road plans to be reviewed and then hopefully, ultimately accepted as an amended road plan.
Just like a consensus from the board?
Yeah, I mean, and so I think, I think, I think the county engineer's office is seeking a consensus. And then if that consensus is granted, then they would finish their road plan review. And then we would come back for road plan approval if that consensus is given.
Amended street plan approval?
Yes, yeah, sorry, amended.
We knew they were trying to get this work done. Some of it's done and want to hold them up, so we wanted a consensus tonight.
That's what Bobby was asking for, is that the board either allow or not allow about 900 feet of sanitary sewer that was not on the approved street plans to be relocated within the pavement area.
Yep. Jim, thanks for the explanation.
Thank you, Jim. Jordan Eigner, developer, open holdings. Just one thing I wanted to make sure that we add that was, was really talked at length internally. This decision for sewer in the roadway actually cost us money. I know over time, we all look at developers of, oh, they're trying to cut, cut the corners and make it cheaper. The, the rock backfill that went, it was rock. We did the sand bedding, the rock backfill all the way up. Okay, so actually you have a little bit of an underdrain under your entire roadway there, okay? But it costs us money. We did it to save the trees was number one. There's sixty, probably sixty-year-old trees there. If you look at it, you know, it's not, you know, hundreds of trees. But, and if you remember, this was a project that is different than a lot of other ones. And I want to make sure we go on record that we had talked about, even with the planning commission, we talked about lifestyle and trails and real trails, not just pavement striping, you know? And we, you know, there's lots in, in this, in one part of this area, there's not double lots, you know? So when you think of maybe, you know, granting or consensus of something different than, than of what you normally do, I want to make sure we go on record, this is different. We normally don't have sixty-year-old trees that we're trying to save, even if it is half a dozen. There were three particular pine trees that my dad would not let me cut down because he wanted to save those pine trees. It absolutely cost us more money, um, but it is a different situation. If it was a regular subdivision where it was in a cornfield and you really kind of have a blank canvas, we wouldn't have any issue, you know? But I just want to make sure you guys knew that, that we were really trying to take that effort to be different and to hold true with nature and conservation, you know, to the next step, so.
Jordan, one thing that really struck me and, and kind of, you know, helped me with my thoughts was, was the fact that Midwest Engineering was out there basically licking over your shoulder at every step when the line went in.
Yep, yeah, so they have to, you know, it's the city of Boonville and they, they have to have an inspector on their, on site all the time. So they were there. And that was another thing that I ne, I just never got a chance to send an email, my, my fault, to Bobby. The laterals are installed already. All of it was inspected. We air tested and manned with this line because we were putting facilities over top. We didn't want to have a problem with City of Boonville. Had, had I not air tested the line, Boonville would make me, hey, you need to air test the line. And if I got a problem, I'd be cutting up street and anything to fix it anyway. So we went ahead and went that extra mile to take all those precautions ahead of time, you know? But I recognize it's not the norm. And again, sorry that we, you know, it was something we should have gotten to you sooner, but we were trying to get all those things, you know? Because there's some really small, you know, change with drainage that we wanted to wait to get to the very end, you know? But that's where we are with it.
Mr. President, anything to add?
No, I was on site last week, looked at it.
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Fine personally?
I'm good with it.
Okay. Where's your business?
I will say that if you'd had Jeremy on the project, you probably would have got your plans submitted.
Yeah. I live with this guy, yeah.
Once Bobby returns to the office, we'll finish the review and get any other comments to them so they can do one unified amended set of plans. They did met the bridge plans last week where they've indicated they wish to switch from the twin box culverts to a bridge design. And then I have an email from Morley's office about there's a few other changes they'd like to make and an email denoted by, uh, Alejandro on December 16th. So we'll review all the prior, uh, small changes that have been submitted in a couple of different, uh, submittals. And we'll make one unified application where they can then finalize and present to you an amended set of street plans.
Good.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Next order of, Bobby, is that all?
That was all I had.
Next order of business is the approval of minutes from the December 13th, 21 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December 13th.
Second. First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three to zero. And next order of business is, Roger, in?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to point out once again, our Warwick County Voluntary Title VI Public Involvement Survey over here on this table. This is one way for the county to, uh, gather statistical data regarding participants and beneficiaries of the federal aid highway programs we have and the federal funds we receive. Uh, the consent agenda consists of four items. I think the reviewed, uh, most of those. I would point out for the auditor's claims voucher, uh, the, where I put plus sheriff's longevity, that's information only that will come to you at your January 11th, 2022 meeting. And I think the only thing left, once you make your motion, would be for the board to sign B, the Health Department, uh, Agreement for Professional Services.
Okay, so for the record, the consent agenda consists of the auditor claims, claims reports from 1215 to 1228, the Health Department Vector Control Contract, Midwest Telecom Quote Q109838, and Pandemic Fund Request 2163. So I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three, zero.
And if you will, I have a couple of other things. The Fixed Asset Notification Form for Reassessment, New Furniture. Terry and Nan had approved that via consensus, but the agenda had already been sent out and posted. So I respectfully request a separate motion to approve that Fixed Asset Notification Form.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, Fixed Asset Notification Form.
I'll second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three, zero.
And, uh, I have Minutes Memorandum for your December 15th, 2021 Executive Session. Uh, that basically certifies that no subject matter was discussed in that session other than that specified in the public notice. That we need a separate motion to approve that. And it's ready for your, your signatures plus attestation from Auditor Stevens.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, Minutes of Minoran, Minorandum for 1215, 21 Executive Session.
I'll second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three, zero.
And the third item about those proposed road usage agreements, that's information only. Waiting for Bobby to get back on those.
Yeah, because I wasn't up to speed on those. Very good. Is that all, Roger?
That's it, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next order of business is our county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll pass, uh, to the three of you, copies, um, of two proposed ordinances for final reading for today for you, if you'd like another copy. The first one is Ordinance 2021-42, An Ordinance of Board of Commissioners of Warwick County, Indiana, Amending Chapter 131 of the Code of Ordinances, Establishing Districts of Warwick County Council, Election Districts, Adopting 130.15 with the new precincts, as you decided upon in your first reading of this ordinance at the last, uh, meeting. This needs a motion and adoption on second reading and will be effective as of January 3rd of next year.
Todd, are these identical to what you left me at the last meeting?
Correct. And I have another, uh, original if you need it, Roger.
Okay, I've, I've just got the two originals here for the signatures, 42 and 43.
So before you now would be on second reading, Ordinance 2021-42, Establishing Warwick County Council Election Districts.
You need an ordinance? You're already in motion?
I am motion.
All right, sorry. I make a motion to approve Ordinance 2021-42, Establishing County Council Districts.
I'll second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three, zero.
Thank you, Mr. President. And also right in front of you then would be the next ordinance, Ordinance 2021-43, An Ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of Warwick County, Indiana, Amending Chapter 131 of the Code of Ordinances. Again, uh, that was adopted on first reading at your last minute. This establishes Warwick County Commissioner's Districts. I don't recollect there being any, uh, changes to those. And, uh, this is before you on motion for approval on second reading, Ordinance 2021-43.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 2021-43, Ordinance of, uh, Board of Commissioners for the districts.
Second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three to zero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, next item on the agenda is a contract with Wilson Family Practice LLC with Warwick County. Um, this was, I don't know where this actually came from. But we have reviewed it, uh, for the provision of various, um, medical, primary and urgent care services for Warwick County employees with Wilson Family Practice. for one-year term, renewable, uh, effective January 1st.
Very good. Any discussion?
Uh, what's the, uh, what's the terms of, of not renewing? Todd, what's the notice?
Sixty calendar days.
Sixty days.
So we'll diary, uh, for at least 90 days to check with the board, uh, for a decision on renewal. Either party can give written notice of non-renewal. So if for any reason the county does not wish to renew, you'll be able to.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract.
Salute.
Second.
Uh, first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three, zero.
Next, uh, it's not needing any formal action by this board, uh, the Indiana Election Division, the NG, I identified boards, uh, that they had submitted to us their preferred order establishing precincts and sent us the wrong one. Uh, the only change in your order that you previously approved is that it's not effective 10 days after publication, which would have been in December sometime. It's effective January 1st. So all of your, uh, and that's by law. There's no difference in what you've approved here. It is just reflective of their preferred form. You've previously approved the precinct changes in the order establishing precincts. And I brought it with me for correction today after. And, uh, next is a proposed engagement letter with Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors LLC regarding the Warwick County Detention Center project. Uh, this has been submitted to me for review. It's in order, uh, between Baker Tilly and Warwick County. And I believe this has to do with services relating to the ongoing investigation and project development for the jail, uh, center, I believe.
Very good.
And it is in proper form and order.
Okay, so we don't need to approve anything on that necessarily, just receive the message that it's in good order, right?
I, I, that's, I believe you, that, that, if you say that's correct.
I think we need to have a discussion with the county council before we wrap anything.
There is a, there is a place for signatures for board president.
But if, if, if the board is not ready to bring it for motion and vote, that's fine. It is in proper form.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, lastly, um, I know that this board and council has been working hard, uh, on, uh, updating and, uh, bringing forward a, a variety of directions, a new and improved employee handbook that you've been going through for many weeks now. I believe, um, or I can get some direction from this board. I believe, uh, you've got all of your questions answered. If, if you wish, you could now place it back on the agenda for formal approval at your next meeting. That can be effective January 1st. But one thing you might want to do is, uh, send out, uh, the version to your department heads prior to the next meeting, uh, for final formal approval and just let know by consensus if you want to do that.
I think that sounds like a good plan myself.
I think so. So Roger, that would just be the, uh, um, updated and revised employee handbook for the next meeting for final adoption.
No, that would be January the 10th.
10?
All right. Thank you, Mr. President, nothing further.
It's January 10th or was it the 10th?
Well, I, I have no, 10th, that's why I just want to check to see. It's the next meeting, right?
It's the 10th.
Yeah, January 10th.
I have nothing further unless you want me to introduce the County Economic Development Department item, which is next on the agenda.
Yes, Steve will not be here.
Got it, yeah, please do so.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I've been asked by the, uh, Steve Rowley, Economic Development Director, to, uh, briefly introduce what he's already provided to the board. It's the First Amendment to the Rural Broadband Economic Development Agreement with, uh, River City Wireless, Warwick County, and the Department of Economic Development. And the current, uh, um, broadband economic development agreement with River City Wireless includes a provision for incentive payments for new customers. Mr. Davis and Mr. Rowley has worked out the, this amendment with River City Wireless, where they're instead redirecting that incentive to provide for 50% payment of the Yellow Banks Tower and the Dittany Hill Tower instead. It does not increase, uh, the county's obligation under the Rural Broadband Economic Agreement with River City Wireless, but just makes that amendment redirecting those funds from the, uh, new customer incentive to the tower, um, assistance. And, and, uh, the county does not have to provide those payments until the towers are complete. It includes, um, a cap, um, of, um, I'm looking for the actual number, approximately 63,000 for the Yellow Banks Tower and 75,725 for the Dittany Hill Tower, uh, and no more. And again, as I said, the ultimate obligation of the county remains unchanged. And if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
This is something they're seeking approval on right now?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, we need approval for this amendment between Warwick County, Warwick County Economic Development and River City Wireless, modifying those incentive payments from new customer incentive payments to tower assistance.
Or are we wanting to see the, if, if it was possible to see some type of coverage plan?
Yeah, I, I have some questions about it. I'm not, I'm not, I guess I'm just unaware of the details of the contract. Is there any timeline here that needs to be in play? Or let me ask it this way, question this way. If we approve this now, is there room to tweak it if we need to?
I believe there was a time constraint from Economic Development for approval of this. I would maybe propose that, um, if the board wishes, uh, a move to approve on condition that any of your final concerns are addressed by Mr. Rowley before you tender your signed agreement.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that.
And if you just, uh, either copy me with those concerns or share those with me, I'll make sure those get addressed.
Okay.
Well, the one thing that I have was I was wanting to see some type of distribution of coverage for each of those two towers. If they could do some type of circumference of what areas that might cover to see. Still concerned about some of the areas in, uh, District 3 that might not be covered.
Certainly, I, I would imagine Mr. Rowley has that data and could provide that.
With it. I, I'll make a motion contingent on getting that information and getting approved through the three of us. So I would make the motion for, uh, the, uh, Amendment to the Rural Broadband Economic Development Agreement with River City Wireless, recommend approval.
Second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three, zero.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'll relay the, uh, those questions and request your information.
Okay. That all you have?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Next order of business is County Highway and Engineering. And I guess that's you, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. President. Steve Sherwood here on behalf of Bobby Howard, who's off for the rest of this year. Uh, first item, as you see, District 1 Highway Facility bid opening was taken under advisement at the last meeting. I have not been furnished any bids for review for this meeting. And I thought maybe the architect who took the bids back in for review would be present, but I don't see anyone in the audience. I would just ask that it be tabled again to the next meeting.
Make a motion to table.
Second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three, zero.
Next item I have on the agenda is to discuss the dedication of right of way for the two parcels involved in the Oak Grove Road Phase 2 and Oak Grove Road Phase 3 projects. I'll take the Oak Grove Road Phase 2 project first. If you recall, there's a parcel at the southwest corner of Oak Grove Road and Bell Road where we bought the entire parcel because it was a house taking. Uh, the right of way has not been separated from the parcel at this time. If the board wishes to do something with the right of way, or rather with the residual amount of property, we probably need to separate the right of way per the project plans from the parcel. And the same information goes for the parcel on the Oak Grove Road Phase 3 project at the northeast corner of Coal Mine and Oak Grove Road. Again, separating the proposed right of way that was taken. By virtue of the project design, we separated from the Warwick County parcel. Basically just, uh, a consensus or a motion to approve the right of way, uh, being separated from the parcel and creating an effective residual parcel that the county attorney be asked to draft warranty deeds to that effect.
Steve, I have a question. If, if we're widening Coal Mine, let's say 20 years from now, the road right of way that you're requesting or you put in there, is that, is that enough for expansion? Or should we just always hang on to that piece of land forever? In other words, don't want to improve that right of way and then 10 years down the road beside Coal Mine needs to be widened for some reason. There's two new subdivisions being built right there on that road. Of course, there's plenty of acreage left to build more.
The project line that you see running virtually down the WLO, no passing strip, is 30 feet off and it's about three or four feet behind the sidewalk that you see there. And that's the right of way that was taken or proposed to be taken. Obviously, we took the whole parcel because of the house condemnation. We can either, um, propose to take the right of way off this now and address it again if the board was to consider ever conveying the residual parcel. We could address that before we would.
Before we convey that.
Convey.
Or sell it or whatever, okay.
And the one in Oak Grove and Bell, um, we have basically 35 feet of right of way with a 45-degree cut here. And this gentleman that abuts it to the south has already expressed interest in purchasing the residual amount of property for its expansion of his yard. He currently has signed an agreement, uh, with Warwick County that he's, he is mowing the property. he is mowing the property and storing an RV in a small boat, I think, using the property as, for his regard, as long as he maintains it. So those are the two properties. We just want to be sure that it goes in the record that the right of way is taken before we ever do something with the parcel should these things move on and we all forget this had happened.
I was going to say, my comment is, I appreciate you doing that. I think a lot of people would have let it just sit as is, so thank you. Councils, does need to be a motion or consent?
Yeah, I think so. So that he has your approval to establish that boundary of the right of way at this point in time. But I'd agree with Steve, the county owns the entirety of the parcel. You can revisit this later before you transfer.
Do they need to be separate motions or we can incorporate both these in one motion?
I think one would cover both.
I make a motion to approve the dedication of right of way for the two parcels that Steve spoke about on Bell Road and Oak Grove and Coal Mine and Oak Grove.
Second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor? My motion carries three, zero.
Thank you, and I'll forward that information to the county attorney for him to address at a future meeting. Last item I have, which is not on the agenda, Commissioner Saylor spoke with Bobby concerning a proposed bollard being installed in the trail at the north end of the cul-de-sac Casey Road where the trail connects over to the sidewalk on 261. Someone attempted to drive through the trail.
No, they didn't attempt, they did. They did drive through the trail.
We were asked to have the contractor prepare a change order. If the board wanted to approve this this evening, we have a change order number six for removable bollard. This would be locked in place and only be removed by the county. Change order number six for that project for the amount of $2,261.0. Bobby has approved that that be brought to the board's attention for the board's approval this evening.
Steve, what's the change order number? Is there a number on the change order?
Change order number six.
Six.
I make a motion to approve the change order number six.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three, zero.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's all that I have, unless the board has any questions. If not, a happy new year for all.
Happy new year to you, thank you. Anything else for the board? Sheriff, do you have anything? Chief Deputy?
Chief Deputy.
Chief Deputy.
Do you have anything for the board? Okay, very good. I'll entertain a motion.
You shouldn't sit by her, she'll get you in trouble.
I told you before the meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three, zero.
Got 435, Christine.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Good signature.
Everybody have a safe, happy holidays.